Ask the question, what is that town clerk? The town clerk's name is Engineer Lefteri. Simoson applies for lease, you say no. It means Simoson now will shut down, number one. Number two, it means Simoson now will be dealing with kada. Kada, I would rather die than have to deal with kada. Don't bring kadas to my doorstep. Take a gun and shoot me, but don't bring kadas to my doorstep. I will fight you till I die. I'm gonna tell you what we go through here on a regular daily basis. And it is pathetic. It's you, one would think we are not indigenous black Zambians. The hell we catch for being on this property. The hell we go through. We go through hell with these guys that call themselves town clerks and Director Housing, Lusaka City Council. Today, this morning, I'm going to share with you things that I have been experiencing that I've literally had enough of. And sometimes when you go through the right channels, you do the right thing because you want to be a good citizen. You want to be someone that upholds the law. You want to be a, a, a member of the community, a, a, a functioning viable member of the community. You try to do all of that stuff. But these people in the town clerk's office, they literally stand in your way and they block you every opportunity they get with one goal and one goal alone, to disenfranchise you. In particular, to disenfranchise us here at Simoson. So I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you, please, Beau Allen, please tag the mayor, tag the, the minister, the, the Member of Parliament, the Lusaka Central Member of Parliament, Mr. Haime, tag him. Tag the Minister of Local Government and Housing, tag him. Tag the Permanent Secretary, Dr. Pollan. Tag the Permanent Secretary of the Ministry of Local Government, Nicholas Peary, tag them. Dare I say, and I, I honestly, anyone that knows me knows that I, I don't name drop. I don't, you know, I don't try to use the president's name in any way to disadvantage, to, to advantage me. But in this case, I'm going to ask you to tag the Republican President Hagainde Hichilema. Because what is happening here is not fair. It's not fair and it's not right. I am specifically referring and I'm addressing the Lusaka Town Clerk. In my view, this man corrupt as hell and I'm gonna explain. In order for you to understand what I will be talking about today, I must take you all the way back to the beginning. This is a story that I've shared many, many times. But you have to understand the backstory before I explain to you what's happening here today. Understand that. The backstory is this. And this is a fact that when, when, when this is brought up, there are people for some reason, for some strange odd reason, when this is brought up or when people talk about this. I try personally not to talk about it. But, but when it does come up in conversation, it's, it's usually looked at with disdain. And it's this, in 1986, this community here did not exist. The business community, the business activity that you see here today. And when I say here, I'm talking about Lumumba Road, Kalushawalia Road, in those days, it was also, it was called Los Angeles Road. And now this is Simon Mwewalane. On this side of, of town, there was no robust economic activity. The robust activity occurred when Simoson was built. Some of you may not know this. Some of you that take this, the hustle and bustle of this community, for those of you that take this area for granted, you must understand that before 1987, nobody used to come here. No one came here. This place was, this area was tantamount. It was equal, it was the same as saying you're going to go to the industrial area. The, the, the distance in, in our minds, when you said you're going to Simoson. In those days, even if you were standing, even if you were standing on Cairo Road, if you're standing on Cairo Road in 1986 and you said to someone, I'm going to Simoson. They would look at you and say, hmm, you're going all the way there? That showed you how, how, how remote this area was. Nobody paid attention to this area. When Simoson was built, the economic activity in this area began to kick in. Eighty-seven, eighty-eight, all the way to nineteen ninety-seven is when they built City Market. A few years after that, several years after City Market, they built Simon Mwewalane Market. Over the years, since nineteen eighty-seven, over the years, businesses have been built on the heels of Simoson, behind Simoson. Behind meaning after Simoson was built, businesses started coming here. So we can safely claim, we can confidently claim that Simoson building was instrumental in the robust economic activity of this area. I want you to say that in the comments. Say that, say, please repeat that. And this is a, a, a sociological fact. This is a fact. Simoson Building was instrumental in the robust economic activity of this area. Therefore, it would be right to at least recognize Simoson's contribution to the economic activity in this area. Let me also point out very, very candidly, we are the only black Zambian owned business along Lumumba, along Simon Mwewalane. The only black Zambian owned business. Everyone else, when I was a kid, when I was eighteen years old, seventeen, eighteen years old, there were a few, you can literally count them on two hands. There were a few indigenous black Zambians that owned black Zambians. My phone is ringing, people are, because of my post, people are calling me. I'm not gonna stop this live until I say what I have to say. Desperate times call for desperate measures. I'm sick and tired, man. Sick and tired, what they want us to do, they... I'll say that, I'll say that later, not now. Cause I want to maintain my train of thought, okay? When I was a kid, there were few black Zambians that owned buildings here. Not anymore. We're the only ones. Now, let me get to the crux of the matter. This is the issue. During the PF, one of the things that we used to always struggle with, there's a piece of land directly opposite Simoson Building. Okay, a piece of land directly opposite Simoson Building. We've been leasing that land since nineteen eighty-eight. For years, I, I remember telling my fathers, asking him, well, why don't we just buy that land? He said, no, we can't buy that land because it's, it's on a reserve. It's on a road reserve. Nothing will be built on that land because that's the land that's going to be used to extend Lumumba Road. It never made sense to me because years later, they built City Market on that road reserve. They built Simon Mwewalane Market on that road reserve. So my father was thinking the way a, a, a right-minded person would think. My father had served as mayor. He knew the, the implications of wanting, of, of, of trying to buy land that is on a road reserve and he always pushed back against that. Lo and behold, many years later, they built City Market on a road reserve. Lusaka City Council through Zambia National Service and a Jewish Construction Company and Israeli Construction Company, they built City Market on a road reserve. They built Simon Mwewalane Market on a road reserve. So as things stand now, because of those structures being built on Lumumba Road, Lumumba Road cannot be extended by three or four lanes. The most it can be extended by is maybe one little lane. But even then, that would be a stretch. But in those days, my father was, was totally convinced, was fully convinced that that piece of land we were leasing from the council and using as a car park. My father said it will never be sold and the council can never sell it because it is part of, it's, it's a, it's reserved for the extension of Lumumba Road. So the council would never build anything there is what he said. Well, my, unfortunately, that didn't happen. Lusaka City Council built City Market on a road reserve. Lusaka City Council built Simon Mwewalane on a road reserve. But that piece of land that we use as a car park and that we've been paying council since nineteen eighty-eight. Okay, how many years is that? Since nineteen eighty-eight, we've been paying Lusaka City Council for, for, for that car park. We lease it from them. Just last month, just, this is January, no, i- 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 in November, just in November twenty twenty-five, I just paid hun- one hundred thousand kwacha to Lusaka City Council for, for ground, for, for, for that piece of land, for the rates for that piece of land. One hundred, it was a hundred and eleven thousand kwacha to be exact. Lusaka City Council. For years, I've been asking council, we want to buy that land. They've always turned me down. It was Sylvia Masebo who called me up and said, Mwewa, the language you are using is the wrong language. Don't, I have a file full of letters requesting to buy that land because the, the importance of that car park in relation to Simoson is immeasurable. Let me say that again. The importance, the vitality of that car park in relation to Simoson's existence is astronomical. Without that car park, this business ceases to exist. For example, imagine if Mander Hill, I'm not saying we're as nice as Mander Hill, no, we are not. Cause somebody on here is gonna start saying, no, you're Simoson GB. Yes, okay, it's ugly, we know. But my point is, imagine Mander Hill with no car park. Who's going to go there? Imagine arcades with no car park. Who's going to go there? Nobody. Imagine Lewanika Mall with no car park. Who's going to go there? Nobody. So if the car park, the Simoson car park that we lease from Lusaka City Council, if for some reason it's taken away, what it means is Simoson ceases to exist. Now, why am I emphasizing the importance of Simoson? It's not because of me, you know, cause I know some people just get it all befuddled. People will start, no, you think you're this, that, it's got nothing to do with me. Do you know how many, uh, uh, Simoson is the only building that charges in Zambian kwacha here in terms of commercial properties? Everybody else charges in dollars. The amount of money we charge our, our, our business owners, minimal. Yes, you can say, well, that's because your building is ugly as hell. True, very true. But my point is, do you have any idea how vital Simoson is in terms of job creation, in terms of, of business vitality? So if you, if you actively remove the car park, you're killing Simoson. I'll give you a story. Tell me, who was the mayor? He used to work for Bank of Zambia. He's the mayor, sorry to say, but this is the only way I'll, I'll jog your memory. He, he used to sleep, uh, he used to fall asleep a lot. He wasn't well, he was the mayor of Lusaka. He was, he would always fall asleep. And I'm not making fun of him, I'm, I'm trying to jog your memory so that you know who I'm talking about. But I forget his name. Tell me in the comments what his name was. That mayor, before Simon Mwewalane Market was built, he came to see me in this office. He came to see me here to tell me that that land, that piece of land that we are using as a car park was going to be repossessed by Lusaka City Council. So that, Wilson Kalumba, that's right. Yes, Wilson Kalumba. He came to my office here. He sat in my office. He was the mayor of Lusaka and he came and said, Mr. Mwewa, we are about to build this new Simon Mwewalane Market. But we have to repossess your car park because it's going to be part of the market. I said to, to Wilson, I said, so Wilson, why? Do you not know that the reason this car park exists is to serve this community and also to make sure that this business functions? Why would you want to disenfranchise an indigenous Zambian who was instrumental? And I'm talking, I'm not talking about me, I'm talking about the business, the business. Why would you want to disenfranchise a, a Zambian business that was instrumental in opening up the economic activity in this area? Why would you want to do that? When I explained to him, when I, just verbally, when I explained to him the implications of the car park being taken away and Simoson not having a car park. And then I explained to him the genesis of this area and, and, and how we are literally the only indigenous Zambians in this, on this street. It was only then that he saw the logic. It was only then that he realized that it, it would be folly, it would be wrong for council to remove the car park, thereby disenfranchising this business. Fast forward now to today. And this is why I call the Lusaka Town Clerk corrupt as hell. I've just received a letter from the town clerk and I'm gonna share this with you guys because I'm done being diplomatic. I'm done following procedure. I'm done going to the council and, and doing, attempting to do things the right way. I'm done with that. Chive, chive. Whatever happens from today onwards, brothers and sisters, let me tell you, I would rather die than to see people disenfranchise this business community. I would rather die. I would rather you just take a, a, a stake and, and, and plunge it through my heart. I would rather cease to exist than give this Lusaka Town Clerk the satisfaction of knowing that he is actively and deliberately trying to disenfranchise a black owned business. I will walk you through it. Sylvia Masebo called me and she said, Mwewa, you are using the wrong language. Lusaka City Council is not going to sell you any land. Hear me? Lusaka City Council is not going to sell you land. What they can do is they can lease it to you. So what you do, Mwewa? She said, you apply to the council for a long lease. That's the answer to your problem. That as long as you keep writing, you are going to write letters from here until, until Armageddon. You're gonna write letters from, from now until rapture. Lusaka City Council is not going to write you a letter saying, no, Mr. Mwewa, we are, we are going to sell you this land. The language you must use is, ask them, lease it to me. Give me a long lease. Do you know who has been given there? Lusaka City Council gives long leases to many people, especially foreigners. Oh, they love foreigners, cause they pay lots of money. There's a Lebanese guy right now who is building Muniyaole Market and I support that building. Because what used to exist where Muniyaole Market used to be, it's now called Mama's Market. It's a beautiful, brand-new building. Muniya, it's, it's Mama's Market. It used to be called Muniyaole Market. The Lebanese went to council and he said, lease me this land for twenty, thirty, forty years. Because you, council, you don't have the money. You don't have the money to build a new market. Me as a foreign Lebanese, I've got the money. But you as council, you've got the land. So let me lease the land. Let me lease the land from you for twenty, thirty, forty years. I build a market and then I just give you a small piece of the action. I pay you a rent. What did Lusaka City Council do? They gave him. They gave him. And I support that. I support it because what that Lebanese guy has brought there is a brand-new market, brand-new. And let me tell you, because that is a private market, that is a private shopping center. The guy is completely one hundred percent full occupied and he charges in dollars. Charges in dollars and he's full. He was given a lease by Lusaka City Council, a long-term lease. Sylvia Masebo said to me, Mwewa, write a letter to council and ask them for a long lease. Then they'll, they'll consider you. But as long as you keep saying you want to buy, you want to buy, they'll always say no. The moment, I just, the moment Sylvia Masebo told me that, I hung up the phone and I wrote, I wrote an application to the council. I wrote an application to the council. In the application, I said, council, I'm requesting for a thirteen-year lease. When I met with the counselors, because you know the way it is, is you have to engage your area members, your area counselors. People don't realize how powerful counselors are. They don't know. When I engaged the counselors, many of them said to me, no, Mwewa, thirteen years is too long. Counselor won't give you thirteen years. The most they'll give you is five years. I said, but why? I'm a Zambian. You've given a Lebanese there twenty, thirty years, you've given him. Why wouldn't council give me a black Zambian? A thirteen-year lease, renewable. Why wouldn't council give Simoson a business that opened this area for economic activity? A business that literally mushroomed, was instrumental in mushrooming the businesses you see here today. Before City Market, there was Simoson. Before Simon Mwewalane Market, there was Simoson. Before all the activity you see along here, there was Simoson. So why wouldn't council do that? Hmm, Mwewa, thirteen years is too long. I said, no, I'm gonna apply for thirteen years. When I lodged the application, Lusaka City Council called me. They summoned me. For those of you that know anything about land issues, when council summons you in the mayor's parlor there, there's a place called the mayor's parlor, the ma- the mayor's office, where the mayor operates from. Right next to the mayor's office, there's a boardroom. In that boardroom, when they summon you, in, in my case, when they summoned me, the counselors were present, the accounts office from the Lusaka City Council was present, the town clerk's office was present, housing department was present, planning department was present. They are all present in that room when you are summoned. They summoned me. They wrote me a letter saying, Mwewa, you have applied for a thirteen-year lease. Council is calling you, is summoning you so that you justify, so that you explain to the council why you want a thirteen-year lease. Ah, when I was ready, I've been ready all my life. So for me, it was not, there was nothing strange about that. The moment they called me, I went there running. I was there before they came. Finally, the meeting was called, they ushered me in boardroom full of these people I mentioned, counselors, housing, town clerk's office, accounts, planning department, they were all there. And I was given the floor. Mwewa, explain why you want a thirteen-year lease. I explained what I've explained to you. Simoson was the first business to open the economic hub in this sector. Simoson is the only black indigenous owned business on Simon Mwewalane. Everyone else is Chinese. Everyone else is Chinese, Lebanese and Indian. People are calling me. Hmm, why not give you a hundred-year lease indeed? Why not? Tell me if we're back, tell me. Please tell me if we're back. Yeah, I mean, I wish. Tell me if we're back. We're back, good. So I stood in front of these people, council chambers, and I explained, Simoson is the first building that opened the economic activity in this area. Simoson was instrumental in creating a business hub. Simoson, this area now is the new CBD. When I was a kid, the central business district was Cairo Road. Cairo Road is no longer the central business district. Cairo Road is no longer the center. The central business district in Lusaka is this area here. Who do you think was instrumental in doing that? It was Simoson. Simoson. I paid one hundred thousand kwacha towards the, the rentals in, at the car park. After that meeting, this is a very important... this is a very important part of the story. I want you to really get this because once I explain what's in this letter against the backdrop of what was decided after I left that council meeting, it will shock you. It will make you ask, Manja, what is Lusaka City Council doing there? It will make you ask the question, what is that town clerk? The town clerk's name is Engineer Lefteri Ndava. That's his name. Ndava. Engineer Lefteri Ndava. That is the councillor's name. That is, sorry, that is the town clerk's, Lusaka Town Clerk's name. Lefteri Ndava. When I explain to you the outcome and the result of that meeting and then I tell you what is contained in this letter, it will make you ask, Manja, what is Lusaka City Council doing? Let me begin with what was decided after I left that meeting. Remember, for those of you that have just joined, let me recap. I applied to Lusaka City Council. I applied for a 13-year lease, a long lease for the car park because I know that without that car park, Simoson Building will cease to exist. Without a car park, Manda Hill would not exist. Without a car park, Lewanika Mo will not exist. Without a car park, arcades will not exist. By the same vein, by the same token, in the same vein, without that car park there, this Simoson will not exist. So I applied to the council. I wrote them a letter, I said, council, can you please give me a lease, a 13-year lease in the same way that you gave a Lebanese a 20, 30-year, 40-year lease to build Muniyaole Market? When I left, the councilors, because you have to vote, the councilors decided to give me a 13-year lease. It was granted. It was approved there in council chambers. I have the minutes. It was minuteed. Understand that one because without that one, you won't know what I'm talking about. Without that one, you will not understand anything I'm saying because that is the key. That is the most valuable piece of information I've given you. After I left, there was a council meeting. It was minuteed. The 13-year lease application was approved. Tell me you got that. Tell me you got that. This morning, no, I need to go back a bit. Tell me you got that. Tell me you understand that. I'm tired of playing, being nice. I'm tired of following the rules. I'm tired. Everything in me just wants to get this cup and just smash it against the window because I'm tired of playing. I'm tired of being, following the rules and doing the right thing. Tired. So I'm just gonna bring out everything here for record sake. For record sake. The 13-year lease was approved. Then I applied to renew my lease. The car park. After they granted me the, after it was approved in council chambers that Simoson should be given a 13-year lease, I applied now to renew my lease. This morning, at 8:35 this morning. Today is what? Today is the 28th. This letter is stamped 26 January 2026. This morning, I received this letter from town clerk, from engineer town clerk Lefteri Ndava, telling me, council has decided to not renew your lease and council wants to turn your car park into a bus station. Mr. President, you know me, sir. Mr. President, you know I have never, ever, ever tried to use your name to get anything. You know I have never used your name in the wrong way because I love you and I believe in your leadership. But, Mr. President, this man, this Mr. Ndava, this town clerk engineer, he's corrupt. And we know why he wants to take that car park away. He wants to take the car park away from an indigenous, black-owned business to disenfranchise it while Lebanese, Chinese, Indians are getting leases. Their leases are being renewed. What about me? What about us? What about Simoson? Why not renew? Why not? Why send me a letter saying they're going, Lusaka City Council wants to repossess the car park that we've been paying for since 1988? Last month, I just paid 100,000 kwacha to Lusaka City Council. The town clerk knows I have sat in case some of you start, in case some of you start saying, but Mwea, why are you bringing this to social media? Why can't you go see the town clerk? How many times do I go see the town clerk? You tell me. I practically live at Lusaka City Council. For those of you that work at Lusaka City Council, they will tell you, I'm there every single day. Every day I'm there. I sit in the town clerk's office. The town clerk will sit and smile at me and tell me, no, Mr. Mwea, don't worry, everything is okay. And then he pulls stunts like this. You give a Lebanese a lease for 20, 30 years? Simoson applies for a lease, you say no, and then you want to turn the car park into a bus station? And you know what that means? It means Simoson now will shut down, number one. Number two, it means Simoson now will be dealing with kadas. Kadas! I would rather die than have to deal with kadas. Don't bring kadas to my doorstep. Take a gun and shoot me, but don't bring kadas to my doorstep. Lefteri Ndava, I will fight you till I die.